Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, August 3rd, 2017 meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. Four of the five members are in attendance today. One is in abstain-- or in absence, and so a quorum has been established. Are there people who wish to address the commission today? Just raise your right hand, please, and do you solemnly swear to tell the truth to the commission as you know it?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. And if there are not, is there a motion to approve the-- I'll make a motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous with one absent. There are no cases today and in communications, a presentation from Oakview Dermatology. Mr. Saroy, do you care to introduce the--
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners and public. We have Oakview Dermatology. They plan on building a building at 2111 East State Street. Location is between the Super 8 Hotel and Holzer down at the end of East State Street. I have a Mr. Tim Snyder who will provide the presentation and communicate to you what they plan on doing.
Thank you. Welcome. And when you come to the podium, could you please state your name and the company that you're representing, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Snyder, president of CM Midwest, New Albany, Ohio. And I'll be doing the general presentation. I also have with me Zach Hedrick, chief financial officer for Oakview Dermatology. If there are any questions regarding the business itself, certainly Zach can address those. And Mr. Clinton Kinsley with the Buckley Group, local civil engineer that we've engaged to submit the Title 41 Plan, which has in fact been submitted to the city. First start off and talk a little bit about the location. We're on the service road out there by Holzer. The property was purchased about two months ago, correct Zach, from Holzer Medical Center. It-- the site is a little short of four acres, about 3.8. About one and a half acres of that is in the floodway, but the site itself is out of the floodway, and we don't have any issues with flood prevention, floodway issues at the site. The building is approximately 20,500 square feet. We're still going through our design development. That may change, but not significantly, but for all intents and purposes of discussion today, it's a 20,000 square foot, two-story medical office building, of which Oakview will be occupying about two-thirds to three-quarters of it. There are also some future empty tenant spaces for complementary medical services that might go into the building either recruited by Holzer or by Ohio Health. In meeting with Dr. Salmons and Zach from the very beginning about five months ago, Dr. Salmons charged to us was to come up with something that was a little softer, a little more warm than your typical medical office building. So what you see today is a result of that collaboration and discussion. And the building will be a conventionally constructed commercial building, steel bar joists, metal studs exterior. We will be putting a wood roof truss on it because we wanted to get this type of look rather than a flat roof. The roof will be a standing seam metal roof up here. It's a kind of a darker color. We haven't picked exactly the colors yet, but the scheme is pretty much as you see it here. Pre-finished cement board siding and then a stacked stone look that you'll see at the front elevation. And we've actually returned some of that around to the rear elevation as well. We have a portage share at the entry to drop off patients out of the weather and a two-story waiting area in here that has a bridge across the second floor. That would be pretty spectacular when you walk into that waiting area. The full elevation, I will show you that. This just gives you an idea of the entire full elevation with that two-story waiting area and then the stone, use of the stone here, use of the stone on this side. But again, very warm, kind of woodsy look rather than a typical medical office building. I also brought along, this is a copy of the Title 41 Plan that Mr. Kinsley's firm submitted. As I mentioned, we did just get back from Andy Stone, the comments from the Title 41 supplemental. Those comments were fairly minor. They related to some under drains in the front here with regard to storm sewer. Other than that, we feel we're in pretty good stead with that review process at this point, and we'll be making those changes to the plans for re-submissioning. As I said, the site, the floodway line is approximately here, and anybody that's been out there knows that that was filled at one point for Holzer and all the rest. Those buildings goes down into the river basin there, which is in the floodway. With our parking calculation, we're actually overparked at 100 to 200 square feet. We were requiring 102 spaces. We've actually provided 117, and that was at the request of Oakview Dermatology because of their practice. So we're overparked with regard to that. The other thing that I did at the request of David Ingram with the Shade Tree Commission, I met David at the site a couple of weeks ago, went through the plan and shared with him our details on our planning plan. We have shade tree conforming shade trees that I think count 44, if I collect correctly. 44 shade trees, all of which we're going to try to accommodate out of the floodway. One of the requests that David had for me was to draft a letter that would be signed by Oakview Dermatology to allow or restrict any development in that floodway, which we couldn't do anyway, but to allow that to reinforce naturally. And some of that area behind Holzer has, and some of the area behind those office buildings at Super 8 has done. And I sent David a draft of the letter. He approved it, and we just handed off direct today the signed copies of that that says that the owner will allow that to reinforce naturally and won't plan to do anything in that area. As far as the floor plans, I mean, it's a typical medical office building. If any of you have been to Dr. Salmons' office, it's not going to be a lot different from that. Zach can certainly answer any questions if anything we need to know anything about the operation. But basically, it will have a two-stop elevator. The building will be fully sprinklered with a conforming sprinkler system. And the traffic pattern, we did want to try to create a flow. So what we're doing is we're actually putting in two curb cuts. We'll have a one-way inner that you pull into the portage share to drop off patients or access the parking lot, and then pull back out and then back out the service road to get to East State Street. Technically, we're on a service road. It's not on East State Street, but our address has been signed as East State Street. Other than that, I'd certainly open it up to questions. Anybody has any questions that I could answer?
Yes. How many parking spaces have been allotted for disabled clients? And where are they located?
I don't know the answer to that one, but you're on it with you.
I see two, and I'm not sure that's going to be enough. Where do you see the third one?
It's on the west side of the building.
There's two here. Let-- now--
Okay.
Right there, you're on it.
Yeah.
Okay. One of the things I would say, too, is it looks like the way the ones positioned in the front east side of the building are, you're probably going to have to use at least one of those spaces as an access aisle to have them meet accessibility requirements for a parking space.
This one here?
No, the one with seven spaces there toward the bottom of the--
Oh, here.
No, at the bottom, right there, yeah. So that space between the two accessible spaces might have to be converted to--
That should be hatched.
That's a--
Okay.
That's an accessible lane.
Okay. So it is an access aisle?
Yeah. It's not a typical park.
Okay.
96 inches wide.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So I didn't-- it looked like that was being counted as a parking space.
Yeah, we can hatch that, but it's more clear.
Okay. And we probably need to make sure that the-- I can't read the figures on this, but make sure the other accessible space has-- is wide enough.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I concur with Christie is that there is a ratio, you know, depending on the number of parking spaces, and I think this is on the low side of that ratio.
Because it seems like you've got more than 100 spaces or total, and so I'm drawing a blank in terms of what the requirement is for 100 spaces, but I'm thinking it's four or five.
It's up in the four or five range.
Yeah.
We'll pay attention to that.
Okay.
In terms of where the recycle and waste, can you tell me where that is located?
On page one, there's one of the civil plans. There's a label for trash areas of the other section that specifies. It would be on the western line of the parking lot. It would be doing labels for 16 spaces and seven quarters.
What's the number there?
Page one.
Page one?
No, one, no, that one.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a screening detail for that anywhere?
I do now on my civil plan.
Okay. We will be providing that as we get through the architectural development. We're still really in the preliminary stages of that.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we bring that stuff to your attention so that when we do get to that point. Thanks.
So help orient me. I know that this was a parcel that recently went through a lot split, if I'm not mistaken. And so this is the lot that is closest to-- closer to Holzer? Is that correct?
Left side.
On the airside.
There's three frame office buildings that I believe are owned by--
Brent Hayes.
Brent Hayes and Scott Brooks, the house of businesses there.
Sure.
We're adjacent to them to the east of there. We share a common lawn.
In terms of signage, what-- were you planning anything beyond what I see on the building?
We most likely will. I mean, there's going to have to be some directional signage and much as you would see in a medical office, but we haven't detailed that yet. But we'll be filing all of that necessary paperwork for Rick's review as we move forward. We've discussed it. We just haven't-- we haven't detailed it at this point.
When were you planning on coming back to the commission?
Two weeks from today.
Okay.
There is a, if I'm not mistaken, a signage kiosk as you come off of East State Street onto that service road.
I just didn't know if they were going to do something more than that.
More than that, sure.
We've talked about that with the, you know, the possible multi-tenant capacity that this building has. Some of it may be on the entries to the building. We may have a fence to sign out front, but we're not real sure. Again, we haven't set down and detailed that out at this point.
Have you been to the Shade Tree Commission yet?
I have met with-- at the request of David Ingram. I met David at the site and shared with him our plan. We discussed it. He and I have had communication via email back and forth that Mr. Saroy has been copied on all that, and he had requested that letter, which I drafted, sent it to him. He approved it, and we submitted today the official documents stating that that area in the floodway will remain natural.
They're going before them next week.
Okay.
11/10. That's why I had him meet early on.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Well, just a comment. I mean, in looking at the rendering of what this will look like, I have to say it is an attractive-looking building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next would be communications on bylaws and rules of order. And let's see. Did you want to give those back to-- Oh, did we turn everything into--
One more. Christie was asleep.
Sorry.
God knows we do need to take care of this.
Thank you.
Right. You want me to take this out to you?
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks. Okay. This is a continuing part of our process in terms of creating more structure on the bylaws and rules governing the Athens City Planning Commission. And does everyone have the sheet here? What I thought I might do for our television audience is try to read through this since it's only about three and a half pages. If you have any comments, maybe what we could do is wait till the end of each section there, and we can address the questions that way. Okay. Let's see. This would be Article 1, Membership. The Athens City Planning Commission is established by Chapter 3.07.01 of the Athens City Code and as provided in Section 713.01 of the Ohio Revised Code. Membership shall consist of five members consisting of the mayor, the director of public service, and three citizens of the city who shall serve without compensation and shall be appointed by the mayor for a term of six years. Article 2, Officers and Duties of Members and Staff. Section 1. At the first regular meeting of each year, the planning commission shall elect one of its members as chair and one as vice chair. The mayor shall appoint a member of the city administration as executive secretary. Section 2. The chair shall preside at all meetings of the commission, shall call special meetings, and shall be responsible for the preparation of the agenda of each meeting. The chair shall also represent the planning commission in matters of areas of concern to the commission when so directed by a majority of its members and/or city council, shall advise and keep the commission members informed of planning commission-related matters, and shall perform such other duties commonly prescribed to such office and those duties that are deemed appropriate and necessary by other members of the commission and/or city council. Section 3. The vice chair shall perform the same duties as the chair in his/her absence. Section 4. In the event that the chair and vice chair are both absent from a meeting, the remaining members shall elect a chair pro temp who shall perform the same duties as the chair for the balance of the meeting. Section 5. The executive secretary shall record the proceedings of all business meetings, hearings, and public meetings, and shall prepare the minutes therem. All such recorded proceedings, manuscript or tapes, shall be preserved as provided for in the city's records retention policy. A record shall be made by the executive secretary and be placed in the minutes of each business meeting indicating the vote of each member by name relative to each agenda item. Said minutes shall be placed in the public record and shall be maintained on file in the office of the executive secretary. Section 6. The executive secretary shall be responsible for the accuracy of the minutes of the meetings of the preceding meeting, for approval at the next business meeting, and shall be responsible for such communications as may be directed by the commission. Section 7. The law director serves as the legal counselor to the planning commission code and shall be responsible for advice, interpretation, and recommendation in all matters relating to planning commission business. Any comments, questions? Okay. Article 3, Meetings. Section 1. The bi-monthly business meetings of the planning commission shall be held in the Athens City Council chambers at 12:00 PM on the first and third Thursdays of each month unless otherwise scheduled. Additional business meetings may be called by the chair or any two members when deemed necessary and appropriate. All meetings are open to the public for attendance and participation and shall be announced to the public and the news media at least two days in advance of the meetings. Section 2. The chair or any two members may call a work session. Work sessions are for the purpose of studying appropriate matters pertinent to the duties of the planning commission. The public is invited to attend the entire work session and may participate during the first and last 15 minutes and at other times at the discretion of the chair of such sessions and matters relative to the agenda or matter discussed during the work session. Notice of the call for special meeting or a work session shall be communicated to the public and the news media at least two days in advance of said meeting. Section 3. All meetings, including executive meetings, shall be held and conducted in conformance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22. Section 4. Quorum for all meetings and work sessions shall consist of three members present at the meetings. Section 5. All questions concerning the governance of the planning commission business meetings and the transaction of such business shall be decided in accordance with the parliamentary rules as contained in the latest revised edition of Robert's Rules of Order. Any questions or comments on that?
I've got a whole question about the meetings section, and it has to do with the two days in advance. That would mean that on Tuesday morning, it should be published on-- is that what we mean? On the online notebook, whatever we have. I can't remember what you call it, but anyway. So you post the cases and the agenda, right? Two days?
I've been doing it usually the Thursday or Friday prior.
I much prefer that because it gives us a chance to go out and look at what was-- especially if it's contentious. So, I mean, two would be the minimum, but perhaps, you know, that might work somewhere else where everybody's going in all directions. But also, the call for a special meeting, two days in advance, you know, again, I don't know. I'd be more comfortable with what you do, your active, the way you do it, with the longer agenda, because we aren't exactly all of this, you know, ready to go on any given day.
So is there like a suggested number of days?
I don't know. I think that, you know, are we going to have it again when Paula comes back? Because she has quite a bit of power. Did you notice?
If we go with at least three days--
She must be obeyed, yes.
At least three days in advance would mean that it'd have to be posted by Monday. And if we say anything beyond that, that means the week previous.
And that's what she's been doing.
Right. And that's historically, that's what's been done, is that the agenda and minutes are out either Thursday or Friday of the week prior.
And I like that history.
Okay, yeah. So I guess, would you prefer that we just have it written in, that it's at least five days in advance or something?
I worked with--
Well, you need to, if you're going to jump over the weekend when the offices are closed, and you're saying either business days or saying like a previous, the previous Thursday or something to the meeting.
I think that we always try to hurry up, hurry up, and then we notice all of these projects take months, you know? And so I think informing the public is as important as getting it out the door.
So Christie or Mayor, would you have a suggestion as far as a preference?
I would prefer a minimum of three days. I think five, things can come up, I guess, is my point, where-- and I think as a city, we strive to work with a number of different entities as best we can. You know, I think maybe if we just put a minimum of three. I hear with two, I think two is pretty rush.
Yeah. I do like her practice at our request. I do appreciate the way she works.
We are talking special meetings or--
Section 1.
Right.
Okay, a minimum of three? Is that what you say?
Yes.
I mean, that's a suggestion.
Christie's excellent. Yeah, I'm comfortable with three.
Okay. The other question I had was as far as section 4, the quorum for all meetings. We had the one situation where some people weren't comfortable with three people voting on a particular issue.
I think that's getting addressed in the voting section.
Is that going to get addressed?
Yeah, section 2 of Article 5.
I didn't know if we needed to put that in there as well, but, okay.
I think section 2 addresses that.
Okay, so we have three days then in advance of said meeting.
Well, I wanted to ask, too, something that came up when we were talking before. This addresses public participation in a work session, but we talked before about time limits in terms of public participation in business meetings. Is that something that we want to address further, or do we want to wait for Paula to be here to weigh in on that?
It's something I think we can talk about, because I think we had discussed the idea of allowing a certain amount of time for people to make their presentation, followed by any questions from the commission that would, I think, then give them access to more time.
Right.
But to have a prescribed amount of presentation minutes.
Right. And I like that idea, but one of the things I also liked that we talked about was giving the chair discretion--
Right.
--in cases where more discussion is really needed than the time allows.
Or less.
I would, yeah. Well, so I would say, you know, if we want to create a limit, like, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, but I'd like to incorporate an aspect of discretion so that if we need to talk more, there's something written into the--
Now, city council has a three-minute, technically, mark. Given that people are, I think, talking a little bit more about the development of their project, do you feel like five minutes?
Yeah.
And then, again, if there's more questions at the discretion of the chair, more time can be granted, but at least a five-minute cutoff if necessary.
Right.
Yeah, we kind of talked about this when it comes to the communications versus it becoming an actual case, you know? Because during the communication, a good example is today. You know, if we ought to put time constraints on presenting, you know, something like this project, yeah, it's like, you know, getting halfway dressed. You know, it's just that we need-- they need more time during the communication to fully, you know, unveil what they're doing for us to have questions of them. But then when you get into the cases, that's where I think that we have some level of-- we can levy time restraints or constraints on somebody. I also, I hear what you're saying, Christie, and it makes me think a little bit further into this particular section, because this section speaks to about two different things. It talks about working sessions or work sessions as well as special sessions. I deem a special session as no different than a session like today. It's where we need to, you know, something has a level of time urgency, and so we decide to have, you know, a special session, you know, next Wednesday in public. We're not having one next Wednesday, but, you know what I'm saying? And so that would, I think, follow the same rules that we would have with meetings like today in terms of the amount of time, you know, if it's coming forward as a communication. In that case, I think for a special session, it's likely to be a case.
Right.
Not necessarily a communication.
Correct. I think that's covered in the second sentence in section 1, right above that, Mayor. If it's a business meeting, like, because we're voting on a case or the commissioners are voting. are voting, and then it falls under that three days in advance, I think that was a recommendation one of you said a few minutes ago. That would be, I think that would be a special session if we're trying to, right?
Right, and, right, my point just being that a special session, if we're thinking about having some level of variance for a working session under chat, under section two, that we make sure that's just, it's clear that a special session, since it's referenced in here.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Is, does not follow that 15 minutes prior at the front end and 15 minutes at the end of a work session.
So maybe work session should be brought out separately in this?
Or, or just a line in here, just a line crafted in that states that a work session or a special session follows the normal rules applied to a regular session. Just for clarity, so that we don't confuse the two.
Any other points there? Okay, we'll move on. Article five, voting. Section one, the voting members of the planning commission are the.
Could I ask you, did we agree on a time or not?
I think we said it's three minutes or three days on the advance.
Oh, five minutes, did we? But, you know, I just, I don't think we ever addressed that, but I'll, I'm going to be the devil's advocate here and say that if we have people willing to talk, and we only have one instance that I can think of when it was really unpleasant, the people should be allowed to talk. My council experience said three minutes, and no matter what, you don't want to shut someone down. And so maybe we don't even address that, to solve a problem that was a single one, a singular one.
I don't know, I would take the other end, that I think that a minimum is necessary just for that one occasion.
A maximum.
That pops up. And, you know, as far as when Christie brought up the idea of the discretion of the chair, you know, that we make allowances then beyond that for, for somebody who's really needs more time to discuss something. But we at least have like the five minutes that we can have a minimum to address a situation that is really kind of straying, I guess we might want to say.
But one person's stray is another person's opinion. I mean, I don't necessarily like to hear it all, but in a democratic structure, I mean, if you're willing to, as chair, accept them saying you're cutting me off, okay, I mean, go ahead, but it's the way it is. I mean, people get all ratty about their opinions. And in fact, I would say, if we go back to the Verizon Tower, there were people here who had passionate feelings and they barely spoke two words. You know, it's only when you have someone that's trying to, I'll stop right there.
No, I hear what you're saying, Nancy, and I, I mean, this is good, let's think this through, because, you know, do these same rules apply if we are actively inviting public in because we want their input, yet we're levying a 15-minute rule on those who we have, you know, sought out to come into a work session, if we're talking about a work session?
Have we defined work session?
I'm not familiar with a work session, but my 10 years have been short.
Well, in section two, it calls it, it just essentially says work sessions are for the purpose of studying appropriate matters pertinent to the duties of the planning commission, so that's a fairly broad.
Is it anything without a, is case scheduled? Is that a work session?
Well, that would essentially be today, though, since we didn't have cases, we only had communications, and today would fall under a business meeting.
There are lots of.
Categorization.
I don't want to.
I understand what you're saying, and maybe it needs to be defined more clearly.
Or maybe we could just go with the flow, what RJ gives. Okay. I mean, you know, I just think, I remember, oh, I've got to stop, never mind.
Maybe we have a section within the article on meetings that is just a section on work sessions, and then just define it all in a work session as opposed to co-mingling. I think maybe that's where things kind of get confusing. You have meetings, and this is a regular session meeting, or we can have a special session meeting, and then we have this third, which is a work session.
I was under the impression, for instance, that a work session for us would be akin to city council when they have committee meetings, and they talk about things that aren't necessarily pending on agendas or what have you, but are things that they are looking down the road on or looking back on, they want to discuss a little bit more off to the side. I mean, is that?
And there's another thing with the planning commission, I remember, we've had so much business, we haven't really had a chance to do this, but we were talking about corridors, and we talked about corridors, and we talked about it, we never did anything. But, you know, I mean, we never got it to the end. You were here, weren't you? Yeah, we, I mean, yours is now done.
Yeah.
Your corridor is finished.
Yes.
And mine is going to be completed, but, you know, I just, we had, we had the image that we were going to have some actionable results that we would ask council to change. We never really got it done, but it's okay, it happened.
Well, but I, yeah, I could see defining work sessions as just opportunities to separate from the traditional business meeting, where we're hearing cases, just really focus on things like that, or propose changes to the code, or even, you know, even this, even talking about our own bylaws and that sort of thing, where you have a dedicated meeting to discuss that particular topic that's not directly related to a case in front of the commission, but is relevant to how we're going to move forward on particular things, so, yeah.
But in terms of minutes allowed for, or what have you, for presentations, I think from a chair perspective, you are looking for something, though, that you can step back and say, your time has elapsed if it's somebody who's really getting out of control or getting way overboard. I think we've had discussions in here where people made presentations that were well beyond five minutes, and we understand when to allow that to happen.
Right.
And that's how I would see it, is that, you know, if it's a, something that's productive, that's moving the process along, then.
You have the leeway to.
Yeah, it weighs to allowing somebody to speak a little bit longer.
But it's a slippery slope to say productive.
Well, I understand, but what if, what if we're, the chair, whoever that person is, is, you know, somebody's really starting to go off, and?
Well, and just to take it in a different direction, too, if it is a particularly contentious issue that brings a lot of people out, are you going to let one person dominate the conversation and continue to talk for 20 minutes when there are a dozen people or more waiting to talk? And, you know, based on the limits of things, there's only so much time that we can spend here discussing some of these things, so.
I'm retired.
If I may, when I speak, if I may address the commissioners, when I speak with contractors that are going to present communications, I tell them they have about five minutes. And what, the reason I do that is that, so that they're mindful in respect of any other cases that are going to be coming, that are cases and not just communications, because you're going to have a mixture. And then, so that's also mindful of your time. So then, if you allow that, if you set a time limit, you can say five minutes, but then, I'm in agreement, the chair can say, you know, would you like more time? Or that you just continue and you just can leave it alone, but if there's a multiple of cases, then you have to be cognizant of other people's times and overall of the meeting. Fortunately, today, we had just one communication, but we have a quite a good discussion on the bylaws. So that's my opinion, is if you just set that time limit, and then you're allowed to, for them to go over, you're not, you're not cutting off their freedom of speech here.
Correct.
You're setting a respective time, and they know coming in that, oh, I got five minutes, I have to squeeze it in. So they're selective in what they say and what is important to their, to what they want to present.
Yeah, and we would still have opportunities if there was information that we felt like we didn't get in the presentation, opportunities to extend the conversation and.
And I think we've, and I think we've done that in the past, and we would continue to do that in the future.
Sure.
But, but at least to have something that technically, you know, you could fall back on, you know? Otherwise, you have no reason to dismiss somebody or ask them to sit down or what have you.
Or allow someone else to speak.
Right.
And then they can always come back up.
Maybe it'll give you the freedom to say, I think you better stay on topic. Don't attack Andy Stone.
Sure.
Something like that.
Okay, so in this, article three, as I understand it, we wanted to maybe define work session a little bit more clearly and separate of special sessions.
In section two then, right?
Right. We want to suggest that two days in advance should be at least three days in advance.
A minimum of.
And then we're talking about a minimum of five minutes for communication presentation? Do we need to specify?
I don't have a, I don't have a. Five minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with somebody making their theoretical five-minute presentation at a communication, and then maybe doing it again just as a reminder, since it's a two-week process for our audience, to allow, so, and also just to streamline wording in here. So five minutes for presentation?
Yes, you have to remember that, when they do come back for the second time, they have to present it again, what they're doing, and then you have to cover what we discovered, the readings from the department heads, and what the things they have to address.
Okay, so five.
Sure, but, right, but under communication, we've heard the initial project, and they're coming back, and rather than have someone, you know, giving them a full five minutes to kind of regurgitate everything that we've already heard, I think they can sum up any changes or concerns that we may have had within a three-minute span.
Right. Nancy, are you good with the five minutes?
You know, I guess I will defer to all of you.
Okay.
I think timing is important.
Okay.
To all of you.
Well, yeah, I think we all agree to that. I think we're just looking, again, just as a fail-safe for certain situations, but again, I think that it is the job of the commission to hear something fully and to hear, you know, comments in their full form without correcting them or, you know, sitting them down, and again, allowing for other people who might be here on certain, certain issues as an opportunity to speak as well. So we'll go ahead with the five minutes for presentation.
Yeah, just with the, with the caveat that it can be extended if the chair's discretion.
Right. And that meets up with what you're talking about here, where the, as far as the discretion of the chair.
Just kind of one note that I noticed as I'm looking through this, we jumped from article three to article five, so as we move forward with this, we'll probably need to renumber the articles.
Well, we, let's see, we had article three for the meetings, two for officers and duties, and one for membership.
Yeah, and then voting is five.
And then it jumps down to five from three to five, we're missing four.
I see, okay.
A simple kind of renumbering, but I just didn't want that to get away from us.
Okay.
Four is an article on stealth projects.
Yeah, secret meeting.
Secret meetings, yes.
So we want to make that article, change article five to article four, and subsequently then article, currently six becomes five, and the current seven becomes six.
Yes, just a numbering error.
Okay. Can we move on from meetings? Okay, article, we'll call it four, voting. Section one, the voting members of the planning commission are the three citizen members, the mayor, and the director of public service. Section two, a majority vote of those members present shall be necessary to pass any item of business that is brought before the commission. Where only the minimum quorum is present at any business meeting, an affirmative vote of two members is necessary to validate the passage of any motion or recommendation. Any motion which results in a tie vote shall become automatically an agenda item for the next regular business meeting, or if so required by ordinance, at a specially-called business meeting.
Okay. It's a deal breaker for me to only allow two people to vote if the membership is five, because I think this is our, tricking with people's land rights and either the developer or the citizens, and I would really prefer to, I would, I don't say I'll say demand, but three votes should be there, and they can.
Three vote minimum regardless of the number of commissioners present.
Yeah, I mean, and they can always come back in two weeks if that's, because sometimes people aren't really, they're kind of half-baked when they come to us, and then they have to change this and change that. I think two is relatively, is too few.
So.
I know it happens in other places, but this isn't another place.
I understand. So what are, what, in here are you addressing or challenging?
When only a minimum quorum is present at any business meeting, an affirmative vote of two members is necessary.
So a minimum quorum, a quorum would be three, and so you'd have to have two affirmatives on an item.
Three.
This is saying you would have to have two, but I think Nancy is saying, even if it's a minimum quorum, you, because the full body is five, so you would need a three. So essentially, you would need three votes for anything to move forward.
So you're asking for a supermajority if you have the quorum?
I'm just asking for a majority of the planning commission, even if they aren't all here. You know, so three people agree to it.
Okay.
That's my proposal. I mean, that's the one thing I feel really passionately about.
You're right, it wouldn't be any dissimilar from having a supermajority. You're, all three would have to have.
All right, I forgot about supermajorities. I just can't do the math anymore. With seven.
Just all three.
With seven. Okay, I'm sorry. I would like to ask that we consider that at least, maybe we can discuss it next time.
I'm not opposed to that.
I'm not either.
In fact, I think that's reasonable, and if applicants are concerned about the, I mean, they can always request that the item be tabled until there's a full commission present.
I agree.
I think it's reasonable to, you know, to expect a majority of the planning commission to support something before it moves forward.
Thank you.
Let me add a caveat to that. I'm in agreement with that as well. I think that, unless it's in here somewhere, that anytime we do have just three members and we know that there is a vote, that that's at least beforehand communicated to whoever is representing that case, so they have the option to sit there and go, then we'll wait two weeks?
I think that happened on the zoning board many times, and that's, I don't know about their rules, but.
A few comments on that. One, suggested language for that sentence, perhaps we just strike where only the minimum quorum is present, so we strike that out, and the sentence begins, at any business meeting, an affirmative vote of three members is necessary to validate the passage of any motion or recommendation. The second comment, two comments actually, I guess, one is which we should maybe add something in that clarifies that the applicant has the right to request tabling until there is, are we saying a full quorum or four or more?
Till the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm saying essentially the applicant should be able to decide if the applicant wants a full meeting, wants a hearing of the full commission, the applicant should be able to request that.
Okay. And then, to follow up on that, with respect to confirming that we have a full quorum or a quorum of three for any meeting, should we have an assumed date of notification from the five commissioners as to whether they will or will not be present, so that we have the opportunity to relay that information?
I think that's reasonable.
I mean, we normally do that, you know, there's an email thread saying, I'll be there, I can't be there, but should we, if we've got to have three days' notice of the meeting, should we say that we also need to have three days' notice of an anticipated absence if something happens in a planning commission member's life where they unexpectedly they cannot attend, and then that's different, but.
I currently try to do that, yeah, I'm sorry, I currently try to do that with BCA, and let the applicants know what the quorum is.
Okay. I think that's a perfectly reasonable request, to be able to inform the applicants a couple of days ahead of the meeting.
I would suggest if we're going to have a minimum three days' notice of a meeting, maybe we have to have a four days before the meeting notification of an anticipated absence.
I think that's fair.
Does that seem reasonable?
Patty, do you usually get responses when you send out the minutes? I try to respond, except when I'm in Myrtle Beach and don't get them. You have to beat the bushes to get the responses?
Sometimes.
Well, I think that's a responsibility that we have to take on in terms of being more proactive about informing Patty when we are aware that there's going to be something that keeps us away.
Anything else on that? Okay, Section three, the chair is entitled to vote on all matters under consideration by the Planning Commission. Section four, no Planning Commission member, including the chair, shall participate in the discussion or vote on any matter in which he or she has a personal interest as Planning Commission member. It shall be the responsibility of the chair to inquire whether a personal interest exists. Any member having such a personal interest shall absent himself, herself, from the commission during that portion of the meeting in which said matter is being deliberated and voted upon. Section five, any participating member may include in the Planning Commission's recommendations to city council a minority report in regard to any agenda item.
So could we go back and say instead of a personal interest, could we use the term conflict of interest, which is well-defined every place, there's a financial interest is what it means?
Yes.
It means absolutely nothing else, so people use it freely and improperly. And I remember when three members of council had stock in AEP and we had to do something with AEP, each person declared their conflict and that was it. They didn't leave the room, but they kept their mouths shut. So it's possible, it's even probable we could do that. I mean, if you're a silent partner in a development, you certainly should disclose that, but some people might not do it, right? Yeah, well, anyway.
Anything else? Okay. Article V, or which will be Article V, Public Hearings. Section one, public hearings pertinent to Planning Commission matters initiated and conducted by the city council should be attended by Planning Commission members for the purpose of gathering relevant information which may be presented at the hearing. At its next regular business meeting, or if so required, by deadline specified by ordinance, at a specially called business meeting, the Planning Commission shall consider the matter and make its recommendation to city council. All Planning Commission members shall be notified by the clerk of council of public hearings established by the council on subjects pertaining to Planning Commission matters.
So does that mean if we've heard the case and we voted to recommend it, then we wouldn't go to the council meeting, would we? No, I didn't think so. You would go. It's your job.
I kind of have to.
Yeah. I, you know, I think that's understood if not explicit, you don't have to make it explicit, but. Debbie Walker has been around the block a lot of times and she's excellent, and I think she let us know. She's a, so I think it's absolutely right the way you've got it. Clerk of council, public hearings and other matters, okay? I mean, I think she, that's perfect.
Okay. What will be Article VI, Business Procedures. Section one, unless otherwise stated in Athens City Code, agenda items of business must be received in the Office of Code Enforcement and Community Development no later than 12:00 PM and 15 days prior to the regular business meeting. Business items that are submitted after this time shall be considered at the next business meeting. Section two, the agenda for the regular monthly business meeting shall follow the format set forth by the Planning Commission. An agenda shall not be required for additional business meetings called by the chair unless new items of business are to be considered at the additional meeting. Section three, each item, each item of business that is submitted for the Planning Commission's consideration must be complete, that is, it must contain all pertinent information such as maps, diagrams, sketches, detailed specifications, et cetera, where necessary and applicable in accordance with the requirements stipulated by the appropriate ordinance under which the agenda item is being considered. Section four, in order that the Planning Commission may fulfill its responsibilities in rendering proper consideration to any petition, request, or plat submitted by an individual or individuals, said individual or individuals or agent or legal representative shall be present at the business meeting and shall fully inform themselves of the ordinance, rules, and regulations relative to the business item involved. It shall be the duty of the zoning administrator to inform said party or parties in of the time, date, place, and purpose of the meeting. The Planning Commission shall reserve the right to dismiss any petition, request, plat, et cetera, if the petitioner, his agent, or legal representative is not present or has not requested in writing a reasonable extension of time for a proper presentation of said petition, request, plat, and the like. Section five, the Planning Commission renders a decision on petitions, subdivisions, plats, plans, et cetera, in accordance with the Athens Code of ordinances. Between the time of receipt of the petitions, subdivision, plat, plans, et cetera, and the deadline for Planning Commission approval, disapproval, or report, the Planning Commission may conduct surveys, hold special meetings prior to or in addition to the advertised public hearing required by the various ordinances for the purpose of eliciting pertinent information from interested parties. Finally, conduct such investigations it deems necessary and desirable. Section six, changes made on final plats, zoning change recommendations, planning unit developments, and other items relevant to the Planning Commission by city council shall be reported to the Planning Commission by the Director of Public Service. Section seven, for zoning change requests, see Athens City Code, Chapter 23. Ms. Bain?
I would like to ask that we define his agent. Could we have, let's say in the last case, it was all right to, I suppose, have the, since it's a monetary, there's a monetary consequence to have the designer here, but if Mr. Buckley's engineer has showed up alone, would you have allowed it or would it have been better to have the architect or the equivalent of that? Because I think there were times, and I won't mention any names, but there were times where they just said, well, it's engineered, you know, and okay, but is it planned? And I think the architect or the developer probably isn't a, maybe this is too defined a point, too, too narrow a point.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying and, you know, I think, you know, there can be consequences to sending somebody who can't answer the commission's questions in the, but I don't know exactly how you would define because individual cases.
Or the agent?
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm wondering is if for an individual case, a particular person might be better equipped to answer the questions that we would have than in another type of case. Whereas if you, if you're like, if you narrowly define who the agent can be, it might not work for every case. But I do think, you know, we certainly have the right and the responsibility even to, if there's some, if the agent is somebody who can't answer the relevant questions, to, you know, kick it down the road to the next meeting and indicate, you know, these are questions that need to be answered and you need to bring somebody who can answer those questions.
And oftentimes there's a neighborhood issue, the one I think of is the one where it was going to do good, but there were people who were aggrieved with the owner of the property. And so he had a signed letter that said he was allowed to speak for him. I suppose that was okay, and we took it as it was. You know what I'm thinking, talking about, right?
Mr. Logue, Mr. Surroy, do you have any comment on this section?
I think it's a good idea to define agent. I would agree with that. Sometimes we've allowed for, you know, the applicant is different than the owner quite often, and that's typically, it's an architect or somebody from an architecture firm. Sometimes it is an engineer, though a lot of, some of our, some of our projects, they're relatively simple buildings that are, just need an engineer, and, you know, they're pole barns type, similar type structures, so we've allowed for that. Those people typically would have more knowledge than, in a lot of situations, the actual owner.
I guess, Paul, I would say that if, when you think of the engineer, you think of all of the things that were on the map that I just handed back, not the construction of the pole barn, which would be a different matter.
Right, right.
So it's where the sewer lines are, where the, all that stuff. I mean, I'm not a, I just think that it's kind of disrespectful to us to send in an engineer who, well, maybe I'm overreacting. Let me just withdraw that comment.
But would you require that at communications or just a case presentation?
I don't care. I mean, as long as we have some vision of what's going on, it's not just sewer pipes, and I love sewer pipes, couch basins, streets, all of those things. I mean, will the streets, will the, will the development create a problem in a neighborhood? I mean, someone who can address that issue, more comprehensive view than just that one. I think the agent is, oh, okay, just tell them to designate, it has to be designated.
Well, potentially, in the communication phase, we could identify who on a particular case we need to talk to, so in the course of the communication, we can figure out what questions aren't being answered to our satisfaction, and by the time the case comes forward, the applicant will be aware of who we need to hear from.
Or who they need to appoint. Okay. I'm satisfied with agent, I guess.
If I may, I don't, yeah, I don't know that we necessarily have to define agent because I'm thinking of a case that we just came through that is going to be building something on a rather large parcel on East State Street. That individual, to me, the representative, was an agent. It wasn't.
Oh, he's fine.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, I mean, how, yeah, so how do we, I mean, you could, you can go all over the place with who constitutes an agent.
I think it was fine the way they had it all divided up, and very often that's what happens, the slipping by ones that I was interested in.
Sure.
Now, are there any items that weren't covered in this draft that anybody on the commission or out in, Mr. Logue or Mr. Surroy would like to bring up at this point? Ms. Bain?
I think troublesome member could ask for a site visit. When this member thinks that there's a reasonable situation that lends itself to actually presence of the commission. As long as it isn't every time.
I think that's a great example of what I would consider a working session. That becomes a working session to where you're going up and looking at the actual site.
Maybe once every three years you'd have to do it, but I think that we should allow for it and let RJ arrange for the buses and get us on, or no, Patty, whoever did. No, it was probably Polly, actually, she's the one with the money.
Now, I think that what the mayor suggests about the work session as far as being the availability of a site visit is a good way to go with that. Without getting too wordy with things.
This is, this is a fairly wordy document.
Actually, it's pretty streamlined, actually, I think, by some of the things I've seen there, so.
Oh, some of the things, okay.
Mayor Christie, any other things that you would like to see added in here that weren't in your mind? Mr. Surroy, Mr. Logue?
I would just say if the commission would like, I do have a Word document of this, I can try to clean up and do track changes of what I heard working with Patty from the minutes, or the draft minutes, and have that, try to get that prepared for the next meeting. And so if the safety director also wants to contribute, she knows what was discussed and sees how the new proposed format would look.
That sounds good to me.
Now, would the commission prefer to have like a, oh?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is Section one under Number Six where it says no later than 12:00 PM and 15 days prior, if we could just put that close of business, please?
Is that what it says in Title 41 legislation?
Where's that?
No.
It's a.
Section six.
Business procedures.
And the business day, it's fine.
It's actually close of business.
Is there a statutory thing?
Because we pretty much do everything like that.
Okay.
So some of those, yeah, I'm not sure if Title 41 says specifically, but it may actually say by noon or something.
By noon.
So this one just, it says unless otherwise stated in Athens City Code.
Yeah.
Agenda items must be received by the Office of Code Enforcement.
Close of business?
Like, yeah.
And we could ask title, I mean, nobody's going to help.
Yeah, that makes sense because 12:00 PM is not, you know, no one's going to be there anyway, so, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, 12:00 PM is noon.
Maybe, maybe he will, I don't know.
Is that 4:00 PM?
Yeah.
Yeah, what time would that be, close of business?
It's four, 4:00 PM.
Four.
If they're smart, they'll figure it out. If they aren't, it's a problem.
When this is cleaned up, do we want to have, obviously, we want to have a final, a reading of the draft and then of vote the next meeting?
Yeah, I would say if Paula's going to be here for the next meeting, I'd like Paula's idea of having a document that's got track changes so that we can make comparisons between our own notes to make sure nothing got lost. I think it might be easier, and then Paula will have an opportunity to weigh in officially on her positions on these things or any additional changes she'd like to see, and then if at that point everybody's comfortable with the document, then maybe the following meeting have a final draft submitted for.
And vote.
Approval, yeah.
Right.
Might want the law director to review.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Did she look at it?
Not yet.
Does that sound good with everybody so we can keep this moving then?
Yep.
Yeah, the law director hasn't seen it yet, but I can't imagine it's that controversial.
Okay. Thank you very much. Report from the city planner, Mr. Logue.
The only thing I wanted to report this morning, or this afternoon, uptown parking study that is ongoing. I reported that we were going to begin it last week at the, or two weeks ago. My intern, Richard, he has been interviewing uptown business owners and business managers. I think he's met nine or 10 now, sat down for a half-hour conversation to talk about their issues with uptown parking and their thoughts and their experience. We were going to start a survey process, but we've been debating, and I think we've determined that it would be best to really start the survey in the fall, once Athens is back, because right now, what most people say is we don't have a parking problem. If you ask somebody today on the street, there's adequate parking pretty much anywhere uptown if they were looking for it. So we figured we'd wait until we hear more frustrations from people so that we could better understand what's going on. So that part of the survey, we'll be waiting until, I think we said September 4th or 5th is when we were going to launch it, and that's like, that would be the first, first Thursday when school is in session. School starts on a Monday, so this would be three days afterwards, and that's heading into the first weekend of the fall semester is when we're going to start. Yes, Mayor?
And are you still going to do aerial surveys?
We are trying to, yeah, we're working, we're working with Scott and Ryan to sift through the FAA requirements for, for those, whether those notifications have to be issued or communications with vets, but we're working through that. That's our goal. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments from Mr. Logue? Mr. Surroy?
If I may, address public. We have a few, a couple of things of concern from a code perspective. Grass, the additional rains recently have increased calls to the code office concerning the height of grass and weeds. We're finding that a lot of weeds are going to seed and they're not getting cut, so be cognizant of your neighbors and take care of your grass and weeds, please. And the next thing is gutters. With the increase in gutters not being cleaned, the code office is working with the Athens County Health Department to reduce the amount of areas where they can harbor mosquitoes. We would like the public to be aware that sometimes we don't look up all the time to see what's going, growing in our gutters. If they could pay attention to that, because they become harbors of, for mosquito larvae. And also, in addition to the water being retained there, depending on how the gutter was mounted, the water may flow back into the wood area and rot the very framing that it's attached to. So gutter maintenance is a homeowner's choice, but also it's a smart choice because it prevents further damage down the road and doesn't allow. allow mosquitoes to populate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Saroy, on that topic, is there anything, do you know, is there anything in code that speaks to this?
Yes, there is a section in code that we address the gutters.
In terms of vegetation growing out of the gutters, not to be misconstrued with a green roof?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, they're not green roofs.
No, they're not.
Pine trees in gutters are not a green roof.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments for Mr. Saroy? Thank you. There are no residents in the audience here, our live audience, to speak to the commission, opportunity for announcements and other business. All good, okay. Our next meeting would be August 17, 2017, with our, with the Athens City Planning Commission's business completed, this meeting is adjourned.